Maybe that's the next. She is.
She's in town.
She's in town, so she's late, okay.
I don't know that she'll be here.
She's sick, you say? Oh, so I didn't know that. Got it. I guess we could go ahead and start then. It didn't say recording in progress. It did, and I didn't hear it, okay. Wow, it's usually blasting. Okay, well, welcome to our, our meeting of August thirteenth. And we're gonna just start with our discussion session, and I think Alderman Fader has requested that we take a look at some of our, our requirements on boards of commissions. And I'll just give one little piece of history, which is in two thousand seven or so, or eight, probably Andrea Maddox Dallas and I did the same thing, remember? And that's when you created your original chart, because. Okay, I'm sorry I was off a few years, but anyway, we kind of went at it, but it's a good idea to dig into it every few years and see if things are as we want them. So thanks for bringing it up. I'll let you just go ahead and.
Well, I, I brought it up because I personally found it confusing on a couple of issues that relate to the commissions. I looked at our website and there's actually a section that deals with plans and, and commissions, which is somewhat helpful, but not terribly helpful. And so I think the mayor alluded to the fact there may have been a document similar to the one that June recently prepared and distributed. But I, I think this is extremely helpful and, and we're certainly clarified a lot of things for me. That the issues that I was particularly interested in that I found confusing in the past was to determine among our various commissions and boards, which of those have term limits and which don't? And also which are ward specific. That is, we have some commissions where it says you basically have to have representation from each one of the three wards and there are others where it doesn't say that. And so I just thought it would be helpful to, and this chart really does spell it out. But my thoughts that I just wanted to bring to the commission to, to the board to see if we can get further for clarification. I might say there were a couple of small issues that I also noted. One was the actual terms of office that people have on the commission. The only one that I thought was sort of, sort of an oddball is you'll see the, the Board of Adjustment. The term is five years, which I thought, well, that seems kind of ridiculous. Who would want to join if it was five years? Even though you could quit early, but I think when I talked to David today, it is a matter of state law, so it is what it is. So that I moved off of that one. On the question of being divided between the various wards, I, I, it seems to me in theory, since we have three wards, if you have a group, it would be nice always to have two people from each ward. The question is, is it a requirement or is it just discretionary? And from what I saw in terms of this having to have two people from each ward, that's a requirement of the Community Equity Commission, the Economic Development Commission, and Sustainability. I'm not entirely sure why it's important for those three to actually have the split between the three wards, but I think it's fine if that's the way it works out. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I did question if that's the case. Why is Parks and Rec not similarly distributed that way? We do have parks, obviously, in each one of the three wards. So if we're gonna do it for those three, I just raised the question, why not from Parks and Rec? And then on the Plan Commission ARB, there's also no requirement. I guess my thought on that is that's probably not one worth pushing that point because it seems to me it's hard enough to find qualified people to serve on the Plan Commission ARB. And if you sort of limit yourselves to having two people from each ward, you've got to have an architect and my other things. I mean, the, the requirements are much higher. So I'm not sure how hard I would push that, although there is certainly an argument that if you want to have more of a representative sort of government at that level, it would be nice to have two people from each ward. But again, and that, by the way, might, some of these things may take charter amendments. And so that may be a little more challenging. So anyway, that was my thought on that issue. On term limits, I'd kind of feel like if the Board of Aldermen has term limits, which we do, and that seems to work reasonably well. And we have term limits on some committees. Economic Development, Public Art, and Sustainability, we have term limits. I'm not again entirely sure why we do, but if we do, which is fine, then why not on the Community Equity Commission? And why not on Parks and Rec? So those are my, really my questions. It seems to me maybe this doesn't need to be answered tonight. But, but it seems to me there ought to be some logic to why we have either this kind of split between the wards or the term limits, and that we ought to try to make our ordinances where we can more specific on that. And then the final comment I had, which ended all shut up, is was a little bit different. And that's the issue, which I did talk to David about today. About the fact that on the Plan Commission, that our city manager is a voting member of the Plan Commission. When you just conked out. So when, when I was on the, on the Charter Review Committee a few years ago, which was mostly based looking, and Kevin was there, mostly focused on the referendum. That was the big issue at the time, and should we change the charter? But an issue that came up at the time was, and, and we did discuss with Craig as well, is whether if we were gonna have a charter amendment anyway to deal with that issue, should we do something to, to make the, the, the city manager, of course, attend meetings? Because he's a very valuable part of, of that discussion at Plan and, and Plan Commission and ARB. But then it's awkward to have the city manager being a voting member. It's preceded by a staff report, which the city manager is generally a part of. Then he, city, the, the city manager comes to the meeting and it's not just a resource, but he's a voting member. It means we have one less member of the community who can be a voting member. So I think there are a number of reasons that if we are going to consider a charter amendment, we should consider trying to do what I think most communities do. I guess Kevin can speak to that. He's familiar with many of them. Is that generally, I think the city manager is not a voting member of the Park Commission, of the, of the Plan Commission ARB. And there's really no great rationale for why that's the case in Clayton, other than it's been that way for many decades. So anyway, those are my, those are, those are all my issues. But anyway, I thought again, this chart was extremely helpful. It's helpful, actually, maybe in some ways to try to convey this to the community. Part of the reason, again, that I would like to see more term limits in some of the committees is to get more people involved. And particularly if there's a certain air of certainty, because you know when someone's term is going to be up a year hence, then you can start looking for people to join. So anyway, those are my, those are my issues that I hope we could resolve, not necessarily tonight, but look at a little bit further to try to get more consistency in how we deal with these various boards. That's it for me. Thank you.
Well, maybe what we can do is just go around and take some comments, first of all, and then see where we, where we land.
Well, I mean, it's my understanding, and obviously, I guess, you know, the city manager is required to sit on the plan commission. Right, so it would take, as you mentioned.
It would, it would take a charter amendment, right.
Yeah, so, and I, I think that's a difficult, I mean, obviously, it's a whole separate topic to amend the charter. I think it's, if we were to mention the charter, I think that would be one of the things I'd probably advocate for, because I think it puts our city manager in a sticky position at times. However, I mean, I, I think it's important, you know, that we, certainly that we look at this. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it's somewhat unclear to me, like, you know, some have term limits. I know it's, it is not always clear why some have term limits and some don't. I, I kind of wonder that. I don't know if that's, is that on here? Oh, term duration, right, so.
The little term limits is on here too. It's the second thing from the bottom.
Oh, second thing from the bottom.
So there's only three things that have term limits in the, those three things. I just, I don't know. Sustainability is one thing, but the PAC. But why they would have term limits, I'm not too sure.
Right, so it's kind of unclear. Yeah, I mean, like, I don't, when, you know, other than the ones that are set by charter, you know, the ones that we've decided, I mean, I remember the, our CEC, just because that's, we just established that not too long ago. So that's kind of an easy one to remember. But, you know, I don't know, thinking about term limits, I, I mean, I think it's good, I think it's good that we have term limits, just, or even like a term, because it helps us to, you know, enables us to check in with citizens to just see if they still want to be involved. And I think, I think it also allows us, you know, if they're, they seem somewhat disinterested and they don't come to meetings a lot, it's a way for us to kind of suggest, you know, that, you know, perhaps, thank you so much for your service. So, you know, I'm kind of curious if there's, I'm not sure what ways we can improve this. But, you know, I think it's good to look at it, so.
Susan, do you have some comments on any of this?
I do, and I did hear the conversation. I just had logged into audience versus panel, so thanks, June, for getting me over. The main one that I think resonates is the, the conflict of the city manager being on the Planning Commission. Because that was something that came up when I first got on the board. And that was just being held until we do go out for a charter amendment. I don't know where we are on the different issues, so we get to that point. Maybe we should review at that some, review that at some meeting about what in the charter we would change if we got to that point, so that we know better when we, we get to the point of, of going out to the, to the community on that. Term limits, it, you know, I, I, what Bridget said and what Gary said makes sense. It's if we have them, that's great. It is a chance for us to, to reach out and it is a chance for more people to get involved. But it can also be advantageous to keep somebody who's a really strong member on a committee. So I could, I could go either way on that. The main, the main part of, the, the main part of this that struck me again was the city manager position, the position that he has put in, the way the charter is written.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, Becky, you have comments?
I am, I do. I actually, I appreciate the opportunity to try to look at this like somewhat holistically and think about like what it means to have boards and commissions and what are our goals with them? And are we setting ourselves up for success in that? And I think I actually have kind of a different perspective in terms of the ward requirement. I think it is really valuable for us to be conscious of the ward affiliation of the folks that are on these boards and commissions. And I think it can be really limiting to have it be a requirement. And I am actually really open to thinking about changing that, that way. Particularly in areas where we're looking for people either with a certain type of expertise or like lived experience to contribute to us. And, and that, that might be harder to find at any given time. Someone who is qualified and willing and able to serve. Because these are all, as we all know, fully volunteer positions. I'm also kind of like, you know, the, I think pointing out that the Plan Commission ARB actually doesn't require that ward distribution. However, when I nominated someone from a different ward earlier this year, I was kind of rebuked in that because they weren't in the ward of the person coming off. And so I'm trying to think about like how, you know, how to feel about that is kind of annoying. So I, I think, like, I think there's value in actually evaluating folks for their ability to contribute to the board or commission based on its current composition. I also think like there are very distinct differences between the wards in Clayton. I would not suggest that there isn't. And it's a relatively small community. So I, I think it's not, I don't think it's like to huge detriment if we only have one person from each ward and then some other ward that's represented with three people, because that's where we can get the best person who can contribute like their time and talent to serving the city. So, so I would actually be open to revisiting that restriction that I think can be holding us back in a couple cases in terms of bringing qualified people interested in service onto our boards. I mean, I know people right now I would nominate for boards and we're not doing it because of that restriction. And we are either have like vacancies or people who've served for a long time and are interested in rolling off. So so that's my feedback there. I'm also really interested in considering doing a charter review and understanding more about what that entails. I know it's a big deal, but I think certainly the municipal judge, we talked about it as potentially an area we might want to change when we talked about that topic a year or two ago. We've talked about it with Plan Commission, and I have no doubt that there are a number of archaic things in that document that we might benefit from reviewing and updating, so. My two cents.
Good, thank you. You've had your two cents. How about you, Rick?
I think it's great that we're talking about this. I think Gary has raised some really good questions and comments as he's gone through all of this. My suggestion overall is that, well, first, I, I find this helpful. That said, I still have some questions which I'll ask about their simple questions, I'm sure. But what I'd like to see us do is actually spend a few minutes on this and actually assess the necessity of each of these commissions. I'm sure they are or they're required, but that said, you know, are they composed the way that we want them composed or comprised? Are they executing the, in the direction we want them to in light of the master plan and the livable community plan? Is there anything we might do differently or we might try to give them a new charge? There might not be any changes, but I think it's important to at least assess sort of overall with each one of these, the strengths and weaknesses of what our experiences have been. And then I think it'll help answer questions like, should we have ward-specific seats? Should we have different terms or staggered terms or whatever they might be? So that would be what I'd like to see is I spend some time. That said, I find it interesting that there's apparently a few positions where the Board of Aldermen are supposed to appoint the chair and some they aren't. And I don't know what odd seat rotates means, so I find that interesting. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, so kind of aligned with Becky was saying, I think, I think the arbitrary two per ward, I think, makes it hard in some cases to find the right person and/or that maybe the right person in the ward that the two aldermen may not know. But I understand that there's a part of, you don't want everybody on the committee all from Ward One, because each of the wards are so different and each neighborhood in the ward is so different. So I wonder if there's somewhere in the middle where we could be more of, you're not tied down to the ward, but there is some sort of max where like you can't have more than a majority of the board from any particular ward. So it still gives a little bit of the balance, but yet it's not so have to have two, have to have two, have to, kind of where the numbers are. And I think it does a couple of things. It allows it, I think, more, a bit easier to serve, to solve the, I need an architect, I need a finance person on the committees. But it also then eliminates or reduces part of my concern on the term limits pieces. I like the idea of term limits for the same reasons that have already been talked about. My concern, though, is finding enough people that actually want to do the roles when other people get term limited off. But I'd be less concerned about that if we have more flexibility in who we can put on the roles. So and then with the charter review, I, I don't know the last time the city did a full-fledged charter review, but I think to what other people have said, I think there's.
It was five, it was roughly five years ago, but it was limited to primarily issues relating to referendum initial, initiative petitions and recalls and specifically because referendums was a very hot issue whenever that was, five or six years ago. That's pretty much all that Charter Review Commission looked at, although the issue of the city manager serving on the Plan Commission was raised and I think was actually in the report. But those were the only issues. Part of the scope was not to go beyond those issues at that time. And then, and then when it was submitted, it was, it was held at the time at the Board of Aldermen because it was in the, in the midst of the Better Together movement. And so it, it basically got tabled to a future date, which is probably still a few years hence.
Well, and, and part of this is why I asked, because I don't.
You should read, though, the, I mean, if people are interested, the report was very well done, I remember, you know, so I encourage you to read it. Yeah, I mean, the commission, it, and it was a great group of people that did it. So I encourage you to read the report, because it was, I mean, it just, ultimately, some of the suggestions by the committee related to referendums was kind of antagonist to, like, you know, kind of making, I just would suggest you read the report. And then we can maybe have a conversation as to why we didn't want to pursue it.
Okay, and, and, and all I was going with that is I don't, you know, I think it's good every so often to sit down and look at all your bylaws or all your whatever. So if we haven't done like a full-fledged search, and again, I, I didn't quite know the length and involvement it takes to get that done. But I think if we're gonna be thinking about these, and we've got the planning commission piece, and you've got the municipal judge piece, like, there may be some argument within the next couple of years to do just a full-fledged, like, soup to nuts review of the whole thing and not just focus just in the referendum piece or just focus on this. So that was my only other comment. I was, instead of piecemeal along the way, like, at some point, just a holistic review probably would make some sense.
No, I think that's a good idea. I think, just a comment on a few of the comments. I do think it would be a worthy cause to, to, to go way up and, and take a look at our, our boards and commissions and what their, you know, what their ordinance, what they are saying they're supposed to be tasked with. And look at that in comparison to our comprehensive plan outcomes and our livable community outcomes and see if we're covering everything that we need to cover. I'll just give a wacky example. Do we need somebody to just concentrate on a group to concentrate on mobility? You know, cars, bikes, walking, whatever else. You know, do we need that? Or do we need to repurpose the, the Sustainability Commission to have that as a real strong bullet point under their charge? So I, I think that would be great. I think it would be a pretty big undertaking. It would be like a couple of Friday sessions or something, but I think it'd be worth doing. Once we get our livable communities plan in place and we move past some of the urgent issues that are coming out of those plans, that's my take on that. I think, you know, it would be great to, and maybe what we need at that time or at some point is a, is a sort of a subset of us as a, as a little task force to really dig into this and make some recommendations to the board. Because I do think, you know, that's what happened before and it, it helped, but I think we could go at it again because I, I, I just feel the need for more consistency. So it'd be better to me to be consistent in how we treat, treat all the volunteers. You know, if they're, if, if we're not gonna have term limits, we have terms, that's great. I think that's pretty consistent. Unless it's, unless it's ordained by some other external body of three years, perfect. But are we gonna limit people to three, three-year terms or whatever it is? And then I, I would love to see consistency across the board there. Maybe the rule will be, no, we're not gonna limit it, because we do have some boards, like the Plan Commission, where, you know, consistency or longevity can be good because you have that institutional memory of what you approved five years ago that might be relevant now. So there, there are those kinds of things to discuss. And I agree that the ward practice is, can be limiting. I think that, you know, and, and I'm speaking just kind of based on historical experience that I've had. The wards are very important, and especially on the Plan Commission. There can be projects in a ward, so a tear down in Ward Two. And I know that everybody cares about the whole city, but nobody cares about Ward Two like Ward Two Aldermen or Ward Two Plan Commission members. And so, because they're, they're, they have to answer to those constituents. And so they're, by human nature, there's gonna be more intently focused in trying to get it right. So I think there is that need. But like we've always done, that I know about with, with the Plan Commission, it's been, it isn't stated as a requirement, but it's been our practice to try to get two per ward. If we can't, well, then we go outside the wards. But we try until the last, you know, the last minute to find someone from that ward if there's a hole there. So that, that's kind of, kind of my perspective on that, and that's why we do it that way. So what are the other things that I would say? You know, we we do, and let's see, we do have, we do on, on CEC. Do we have term limits? I was thinking that we, that we did, so that's irrelevant. But, you know, and maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be consistent all the way across the board. Maybe, you know, we have, we have some commissions where we think term limits are important because we may have a plethora of people in the community who really want to serve on that commission. I think sustainability and CEC are two of those where we have a lot of people in our community that are interested in this. So we may want to have the ability to say, hey, you've had three terms. You know, rules are, you're off and we're gonna bring somebody new. That makes it easier, you know, for us. So I think from my perspective right now, to change anything right now, I, I'm not like hell-bent on it. But if any of you are, I think, speak up if you want to change, look at changing something immediately or waiting until we really take a broad-scale look at all of these boards and their functions and whether we need them all, or whether we need more, or we need to change functions or what. So does anybody have something that they just really want changed right away? Oh, okay, okay.
Michelle, can I add something?
Then Kathleen, I'll get to you. Sorry.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense to look at these more individually. And this exercise has been really, really helpful, just seeing it laid out and on this sheet, so thank you. Because I, there is, there is a lot of value to, to broad ward representation. And some is it pushes us to dig a little deeper in a ward to find somebody. So, you know, whether we do that by, it depends on the commission, committee or commission as we go along. So that makes a lot of sense. The, the other part is that I, it does tie into, especially when you, when you mention the Plan Commission or something, it does again tie into the charter. So the charter review would, would be tied to that as well. And if we do that, both those things would probably be timely. It hasn't been done for a long time. So I, I hope we can pursue those in Friday sessions would be a good time to do that.
So it looks like what we have is, at some point, and I don't know if it would be like this coming spring or someplace when we've gotten, set our priorities on some of the zoning priorities that are coming out of our plans and we've got some of that laid out, we know what we're doing, and we have the time available to work through some of this. Then we would set up, you know, some of that. Oh, thank you. And Kathleen, please speak. Sorry about that. Sorry about making you wait.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This is Kathleen Dund. I live at three twenty-nine North Bemistin Avenue. And regarding something that I think Gary said about planning ARB has to be someone out of like the development community or an architect or a designer. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that is a requirement of the charter. But that has become a norm. So one of my, I, something, whether or not I agree with that norm, some of these things could be done before there's a charter review by sort of developing norms. As far as like, well, it's not written in the law, but this is the way Clayton does it. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. But what I would like to see done very, like, immediately would be when a term is coming up, you know, John Smith is on some commission or committee and the term is over at the end of June. In March or April, there's something that goes out in the Clayton Connect or in other kinds of things that say, um, there is a potential opening for this commission. If you are interested, please apply. That doesn't necessarily mean that John Smith is not doing a really good idea, but I think that in the past or historically, it's been, the Alderman and the mayor kind of going and trying to find people. Um, and I think that it should be more of a systematic approach. Hey, um, all these people are rolling off commissions. If anyone else is interested, then please put an application in. And I don't see that that has been done in the past. And I think that that's, I think that's a system that we should put in place. Um, so that people are aware that these commissions are out there and that they are welcome. Um, and I think that that has, um, not been felt in the past. Thank you.
Kathleen, I, I mean, I think that's a really good point. And I think that was definitely the case when I first started. Um, I think it was like word of mouth. And like you said, you know, if there was an opening on Parks and Rec and it, we needed a Ward Three person, then oftentimes it was, you know, something where I'm like, oh, that person's always at the center or that person's always using the parks. You know, that she, he or she would be great. But I do think, I mean, just in terms of, so you understand, I guess, the process, I guess, that Gary and I use. You know, we, June will send out the spreadsheet, which will show, you know, what expirations of terms there are. And then Gary and I kind of mutually reach out to those people and say, hey, thank you for your service. Please let us know if you want to continue. Um, you know, if they're able to, if that, I mean, sustainability has a, you know, they're only, you can only serve three, three-year terms. And then if they respond and they, you know, I, we've kind of heard that they're interested and they go to meetings, then if they responded, said, yeah, I, I really enjoy it. I want to stay on. Then we usually recommend for reappointment. We usually give June, I don't know, I think by May or something. You know, once we've heard from everybody, whether or not they want to stay on, then let's say Gary and I have like two openings on different committees. We say, hey, June, these people want to be reappointed. They've done a good job. They keep going to meetings. They're excited, but we have two openings and these are the two openings that we see from Ward Three members. So, and then we have been posting them in Clayton Connect. It'll go out and say, hey, you know, there's openings in these different committees. I mean, that's, so I do agree with you that I think that was the case four, five, six years ago, but I think in the last couple of years, we've really tried to make it clear to the public where there are openings on and on what committees. So.
Sure.
Right. June, why don't you chime in just for a second? Where do you do all the postings? Um, our, uh, person, our marketing person would post them on, we posted last year in City Views. We posted on our webpage. We posted in the, um, the weekly e-blast. And I think that's, I think that's it. And it was a word of mouth. And, and yeah, all the Aldermen try to spread the word. Yeah. So I think we've kind of addressed your issue on that one, Kathleen.
So I, I would just would like to say that, you know, picking up on your comments, Mayor, I would prefer that we try to make this a priorities before the spring, something more like the fall so that, and I like the idea of a, of a subset of people working on this to consider it, to break proposals forward, to have a meaningful discussion about it and, and go back and forth. I, I think we've received a lot of good suggestions or topics, um, that we should consider, um, tonight. You, you know, another one that occurred to me would be, do we want to have um, any other ad hoc committees, something that's a temporary need. And as an example that comes to mind, we've talked about, um, or at least I have, but I think others have about like a finance committee of citizens to talk about it so they understand things. And so there may be a variety of ideas and it may be a short-lived committee and that's fine, but I think having that, considering the overall strategies and goals of what we're trying to, um, put in place. Have it in context, establishing the norms, looking, doing it the way we want to do it. But just don't want us to wait because turn our next spring, we should have had that all figured out already. So I think doing it sooner rather than later would be best.
Well, I think you just volunteered to be on that.
I'm happy to do that.
And I don't know if anybody else wants to. Maybe we should have two different wards represented. So, um, and yeah, anybody that wants to work on this is welcome too. So I think, uh, we're going to leave it to you to set up your timeframe then, but let us know. And then what we'll do is I still, I still do believe we have a lot of important stuff to focus on as a board and as a staff. First, but we can, you guys can be working and then when you're ready, we can take a look. Maybe that'll work out just great. Yeah. Okay.
Can I follow up one thing? Just, you know, we, on Kathleen's question, we were talking about the postings. But do we actually spell out what board seats are opening? So it's not just a generic, hey, we need board seats. Okay.
Correct. We'll, we'll list, um, what's available.
Okay.
Very good. I mean, I think that's just in keeping with our general, um, kind of push to be more, um, communicative about openings for the judge, the prosecutor and all the boards and commissions, et cetera. I mean, we've just made a push for the last few years about trying to really make that more accessible, that information. Okay, great. It is a little after seven, so we should start our regular meeting. Willa City Clerk called the roll.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Here.
Alderwoman Buse.
Here.
Alderwoman Patel.
Here.
Alderman Fader.
Here.
Alderman Hummel.
Here.
Alderman York.
Here.
Air Harris. City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, it's time for public requests and petitions. Anybody who's here or online with a question or comment for us about something not on our agenda tonight, now's your chance. Seeing none, we can move on to our first public hearing, our only public hearing for the night on Bland Drive. So I will open the public hearing and request proof of publication.
Thank you. This is a public hearing and subsequent resolution to consider granting a conditional use permit to Don Kotva, owner of 7451 Bland Drive to allow for a 1,195 square foot accessory dwelling unit. The property has a zoning designation of R2, single-family dwelling district. The Plan Commission and Architectural Review Board considered the applications and associated architectural and site plans for the project on August 5th, 2024, and recommended approval of the CUP and approved the architectural and site plans. An accessory dwelling unit or ADU is a type of accessory structure, either attached or detached, which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons located on the same site as a principal residence. This particular ADU will be contained within an attached building addition. ADUs are permitted subject to the approval of a conditional use permit per the city's zoning regulations. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the CUP with two conditions. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen conduct a public hearing and consider approving the resolution granting a conditional use permit for a 1,195 square foot attached ADU for 7451 Bland Drive.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes. Okay. Um, I don't know if we have questions for you, but I just wanted to check. Uh, so, um, we'll open the discussion. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? I see none. Any comments or questions from the board? We'll go around in order of seniority. No. Susan, anything?
No, um, and the applicant had also reached out with an email ahead of time to, um, several of us just stating that, that this does seem to very much meet the requirements of what we have for an ADU um, with family members and things like that. So I have, I have no other comments.
Okay. Alderwoman Patel.
Yeah, so I guess I actually have a question about that because the, um, report, um, from the city manager here on the agenda says that in an R2, the maximum, um, square footage is 1,000 and this is requested at 1,195 square feet. So what am I missing?
Alder, I was going to mention that, but I was like, oh, I wonder if somebody in, I knew one of you would have caught it. They went to the Board of Adjustment and asked for an increase, which was approved. Like, so they are allowed to build a larger accessory, accessory dwelling strip unit that matches, um, what's in the R1. I mean, it's just, it is, the point is they were granted the variance, I guess, to build a larger unit.
Um, just to make sure I remember like what board does what and what that means. Um, the Board of Adjustment operates outside of our authority and process, right? And, um, typically requires that there's a hardship demonstrated in order to approve a waiver.
Some unique situation.
Do we know what that is?
You want to, would you like to come forward? Please, and state your name and your address, and then you can hopefully answer that question. Oh, is your, is your microphone green, lit up green? Okay.
Okay. Should I say that again?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, my name is Dee Joyner and I am the mother of Don Kotva, who is the applicant in this case. And she is out of town on a business trip and was hoping to be able to zoom in, but her flight got delayed. So I am here representing. And, um, my address is currently 6340 Clayton Road.
Are you the mother who's?
I am the mother who is planning to move in.
You know about what, 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 what constant, you know, why, why the Board of Adjustment granted the variance?
Well, I believe there were sort of two reasons why. One of them had to do with the configuration of the unit on the particular site because it's kind of an odd shape if you looked at the site plan. Um, and we wanted a little bit extra space that I could use for some exercise equipment and office that would not take away from the opportunity to have two bedrooms. So if I ever need a live-in caregiver, we've got the option to do that. So that's basically my remembrance of why they approved the variance.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here to answer questions.
Happy to be here.
I guess I don't have any other questions. Thanks. Alderman Fader.
I have, uh, no questions, no comments.
Just a curiosity question. It seemed to me that we approved, maybe it was a, um, plat subdivision or something else, um, on Bland. Was it the same lot? Um, and it, what, what is it that we approved before?
Consolidation.
So this was put the two lots together?
This addition to the structure actually goes over that former lot line.
Okay.
Consolidated into one lot, making it larger.
Yep. That, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm assuming this is the case when it goes through the planning commission. I assume it'll look just like the other house or is, or I couldn't tell from the plans whether it's going to look similar or different.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it, it went through architectural review. It probably, yeah, so it was, it's brick. It looks very nice. It's similar to the other. I mean, it's, it will look like a new structure, but yes, I mean, they have similar features.
Cause it looks like it goes right up to the lot, right up to the setback line. So I was.
Yeah. And I don't know if you've been over there. I mean, it's kind of an unusual lot. So.
I looked at it from Zoom and I hadn't actually driven by it. So, okay. That was all I had.
All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, all right, Dee, you can resume your seat.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Uh, all right. So I will now, uh, without further discussion, I'll close the public hearing. Alderman McAndrew.
Um, I move to approve a conditional use permit for 7451 Bland Drive to allow for an accessory dwelling unit.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. There you go. Thank you very much. You are welcome. Um, all right. The, next on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone want to discuss anything that's in there? Appointments or minutes or whatever? All right. Alderman McAndrew.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. It's a roll call. It's a roll call.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Air Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Now it's time for the city manager report. Um, the first thing is the condominium plat for Oxford Drive.
Yes, this is an ordinance approving a condominium plat at 7527 Oxford Drive. The subject property comprises one multifamily structure with six units. The applicant wishes to convert the building to a condominium and submitted a condominium plat bylaws and declaration. Staff are of the opinion that the requested plat is in compliance with applicable codes, ordinances and standards of the city code related to condominiums and condominium building conversions. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve with two conditions. First, the applicant shall provide a Mylar for the appropriate city signatures after Board of Aldermen approval. And second, that the applicant shall file the plat with the St. Louis County Recorder of Deeds Office and submit proof of filing to the city within 45 days of Board of Aldermen approval.
Okay, very good. Uh, I will open the discussion and ask if the applicant is here. Uh, you might as well come forward. I'm sure that someone will have a question. And you could make sure the mic is on green and, um, introduce yourself and your address.
Larry Lipsitz. And I'm the owner of the building on 7527 Oxford.
Larry, I'm, I'm glad to finally meet you in person. I've seen many, many emails, uh, coming through with your name on it. So thanks for being here. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lipsitz about this?
I was just going to ask you, I'm curious, what does, what makes you decide to have a building become a condominium versus?
That was our intention originally back in oh six when we did it. But then the market came to halt in oh eight. So we just kept them as rentals and now the markets improved. Plus you can get, uh, traditional loans on them. So we're, it's a, it's a, the time to do it. So we, we already did everything back in oh eight. So it's really just redoing again what we had before, the bylaws, the adventures and the, and the plot. Yes.
The only, the only question I had was, I was, I was curious what the rents are now versus what you're going to list them at. Just trying to keep in mind of the whole affordable housing question that we have around Clayton. So if you can give me a feel for that.
Well, the rents are 3,500 now.
They're what? Sorry.
3,500 now. And to make it like somewhat attractive, we get to be 4,000 plus. And it's just not possible.
Okay.
The rents are so high. So, um, we put a lot of money in the building back in oh eight. Planning to sell them as condos.
Okay.
Yeah. So it took us a while to get back up to that, to, to that level.
Okay.
The, the Clayton rental markets, I have two other buildings on Parkdale. So the rental market's pretty good, you know, in Clayton. A lot of new apartments, but you know, um, but you really hit a wall when you go over $3,000. It's at least in the Morlins.
Okay.
You know, uh, for, and for small guys like us where we don't have the, the, the big pool. So, yeah, so we're going to, uh, sell those off as condos and, and I still have the two buildings on Parkdale. There's an 18 family and a 24 family and, um, those are just perfect.
Larry, Larry actually runs to my dad. Sorry.
Oh, is it right?
Yeah.
Oh, very good.
Who's that?
Patrick Kenny.
All right. That's right.
He loves the buildings.
Yes, he's a big guy.
And can I ask, I don't, I think you asked this, but I'm not sure it came out. Um, the, the purchase, like the price per unit, what's the rate?
Uh, they'll be 600 a unit. And, uh, we have actually 500 into each unit and that was 15 years ago. So if you're looking for investment, uh, advice, don't come to me.
I was one of those who bought a condo right as the market was tanking and it took me years to ever get it back. So I can appreciate it in a very small way.
Any other comments or?
I, I am just curious, are there any transition issues, um, with, from renters to owners? Um, is there anybody that's going to be displaced or do you have a plan or do you have to, any concerns about that?
So we have two units ready to go now. And then we have another one, a renter coming up next year and then the rest of the following year. So in the bylaws, they cannot renew the lease. So they'll, they'll stay there until their lease is up. And it'll be interesting to see if anyone want to buy their, their unit. But if not, then the, the, the building will not have any renters. It'll be all, it'll be all condos.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you giving them the option to purchase, like, like a right of first?
We'd love them for, you know, we'll find out tomorrow when, when I announce it, when the for sale sign goes up, hopefully. But, yeah.
Thanks.
And Larry, I just have one comment, um, which is really thanks for investing in our community. The building looks really nice. And, uh, I look forward to seeing this be a success.
Thank you. Are you Susan?
I'm Susan. I'm home not feeling well.
In the flesh, huh? Okay.
That's right.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Um, I have one question. So when it says, uh, the condition was to get a Mylar, that's something I just worked through my attorney. I mean, I'm not familiar with that.
Uh, actually the, the engineer or whoever prepared your plat.
Okay.
Will be able to print that. That, that refers to the material that is printed on, so that can be recorded.
Okay.
Perfect.
Very good. Uh, all right. Um, Alderman McAndrew.
I will introduce bill number seven-zero-three-four approving a condominium plat for seventy-five twenty-seven Oxford Drive to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven-zero-three-four first reading. An ordinance providing for the approval of a plat for the Oxford Place Condominiums. A condominium located at seven-five-two-seven Oxford Drive in the city of Clayton, Missouri.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll move that the board gives unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven-zero-three-four on the day of its introduction.
Second.
Let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
Oh, we didn't vote though, first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, I knew it would pass, so, no. Sorry, guys.
I'll introduce bill numbers seven-zero-three-four approving a condominium plat for seventy-five twenty-seven Oxford Drive to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven-zero-three-four second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for the approval of a plat for the Oxford Place Condominiums. A condominium located at seven-five-two-seven Oxford Drive in the city of Clayton, Missouri. Madam Mayor, I believe the applicant has a question.
I was just, I, I had seen that now, yes.
Why, the realtor needs, needs a letter or something proof from Clayton to put it on the MLS. Will that just be on your website, or how do I?
So with this particular ordinance, we can give you a certified copy of the ordinance that the city clerk can seal, showing that the Board of Aldermen has approved it. I think, though, the most important item is gonna be bringing that Mylar in, so you can get signatures on that. You're gonna have to get that recorded at the county, because
Right.
the units won't be legally established until that document has been recorded. So where that happens relative to MLS, I couldn't tell you, I'm not familiar with, with that portion of it.
Right.
But you do need to complete that entire process to legally split that building into those individual units. So I would advise you as quickly as you can to get that, that Mylar in here, so that we can review it and sign it. And then as soon as the mayor signs the ordinance, the city clerk can arrange to get you a certified copy.
Okay. Next couple of days or something. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yes. Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Leah Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, the long-awaited fire department agreement.
Yes, so this is an extension. This is an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood and Richmond Heights to continue collaborative fire department training that began in twenty-seventeen. The agreement includes the training chief responsibilities, member city criteria and program cost sharing between member cities. The cities of Brentwood and Richmond Heights have approved the agreement, and the IGA will be considered for approval at the next city council meeting in the city of Maplewood. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached ordinance, authorizing the city manager to renew the revised intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Brentwood, Maplewood and Richmond Heights to continue the current multi-agency fire training program.
Great. I will open the discussion. Any comments or questions from the audience? No? Any discussion up here?
David, I was just, I wasn't, I guess, so this isn't necessarily an agreement where we, you know, because we share fire trucks and stuff, so this isn't that. This is just related to fire training, and this is not related to our fire training. What we're, what we're building.
That is correct, so the, the Fire Training Center is set up as a separate commission.
Right.
However, the, the member cities of that commission are also the member cities in this fire training cooperative. This is separate from mutual aid completely, and so we do respond to calls in each other's cities on a regular basis, and that's why we established this in the first place. We spend so much time in neighboring communities, and they spend so much time here. The cities thought it important enough in twenty-seventeen to establish joint training so that everybody's speaking the same language, they know where all the equipment is on all of the trucks that could be responding to anything that pops up. So it's an arrangement that's worked really, really well. One of our battalion chiefs has been detached for years as the training chief. He'll continue in that, that particular role, but it's served the four communities really, really well. And our response time has been really greatly enhanced. If you look at our numbers through this training cooperative, it's, it's really impressive if you look at the before and after performance-wise.
So the joint training, so before we would go together with these agencies to train the, you know, external training facility. We would, would we train together at those external facilities then, or?
Somewhat, not, not as much as it is now. Now it is all tightly coordinated, so if you go to any sort of training that's going on, you'll see trucks from every community there, firefighters from each one of these communities, again, working together as a group, because in real-life situations, that's what happens on a regular basis. Before that, it was kind of haphazard, and everybody had, within their own departments, a captain or somebody that was assigned to training within their departments, but the training priorities were different within each department, and this has coordinated all of that.
Thank you.
Pass.
I'll introduce bill number seven-zero-three-five approving an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Brentwood, Maplewood and Richmond Heights for fire department training services to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven-zero-three-five first reading. An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood and Richmond Heights for fire department training services.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll move that the board give us consent to consideration adoption of bill number seven-zero-three-five on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number seven-zero-three-five approving an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Brentwood, Maplewood and Richmond Heights for fire department training services to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Sorry, any discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven-zero-three-five second reading in consideration for adoption. An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood and Richmond Heights for fire department training services.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Leah Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The professional design services for the municipal garage.
Yes, this is an exciting one for us. On May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, an RFQ was issued for professional design services related to the Clayton Municipal Garage renovation project. Fourteen proposals were received and evaluated based on team structure, relevant experience, project approach, client references, proximity, experience in sustainable design and minority and women-owned business participation. After a thorough review and interview process, H Design Group LLC was selected due to their strong qualifications and relevant experience. The city's owner representative, Navigate Building Solutions, managed the selection process to ensure alignment with the city's project goals and budget. Services provided by H Design Group team under this contract include confirmation of the condition and needs assessment, site design, architectural design, structural design, equipment design, interior design, MEP design, which is mechanical, electric, plumbing and low voltage, cost estimation and construction phase services. The, the fee negotiated by Navigate and the city for this contract is nine-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The capital improvement fund has sufficient funding allocated for this portion of the project. Design is planned to take place over the next eleven to twelve months, with construction bidding planned immediately following in June, July of twenty-twenty-five. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance, authorizing the contract with H Design Group LLC in the amount of nine-hundred-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, plus a five percent contingency of forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for the Clayton Municipal Garage renovation project. And I would just say that a couple of things. First of all, fourteen proposals is a really big number, way more than we thought we would get. So the response to this project was, was, again, much greater than we anticipated, and, and we felt like we got some really good firms that we had a choice, or, you know, that we got to choose from. So I wanted to point that out. As far as the cost is concerned, this is under what we had put into our program budget, so we were encouraged to see that. We know as, with every construction project we have, we're gonna need that money along the way. So there were some savings on the design side, which was really excellent to see. And then finally, while we note in here that the, the capital improvement fund can, can fund this portion of the project, we'd allocated those funds. I did just want, remind the Board of Aldermen that when we go out and borrow for this particular project, that money is basically reimbursable through the bond proceeds. So as far as that debt issuance is concerned, we're gonna have a conversation with the financial advisors and figure out our timing for this. We had talked about doing something in the fall. It looks like that was probably a good strategy, because we are anticipating some sort of rate cut, what that might look like in the municipal bond market, not quite sure yet. But we are gonna talk to them a little bit about scheduling, so more to come on that particular item. But I did want you to know that anything spent on design is going to be reimbursable once those, those bonds have been issued, so. With that, we can answer any questions. We have Matt Malik, our Director of Public Works here, and Joe Switzer from Navigate Building Solutions, who's been our owner's rep as well, to answer any questions you might have.
I'll go around, go ahead.
I think the big question I have is, I just wanna, and I know we have Navigate here to help us. You know, we tried to design an ice rink that became a, you know, we ended up getting a design that was way, way over budget. So I'm just, you know, and I know Navigate's here to help us. I just want to ensure that whatever, whatever H Design Group is gonna design for us, that it will, you know, come under what we bond out for. So I mean, that's, and again, I just want to make sure that that's clear, and then.
Understood, and we, we've made that clear, and that's, that's our expectation as well. So we'll make sure that, that happens through the process, and, you know, if prices get inflated for, for some particular reason, that we're gonna have to take a look at, you know, potential cuts on the project or other things to make it happen. But I think we all realize that the, the budget that's been laid out and those, those financial parameters, that those are, those are hard numbers.
Okay. Susan, any comments, questions? Becky, comments, questions?
Yeah, I was thinking back to the multipurpose facility project, and curious about what, if anything, you can share about how this compares to that? Because what I remember about that was it was kind of like a new format or structure for the city and working with this, you know, organization that would be like acting on our behalf and managing it all. I'm not sure if, you know, how, can you talk a little bit about that? Do you know what I'm asking? I think it was different.
It was a different arrangement than what we have here. So Navigate Building Solutions, the owner's representative. What we had was a construction management contract for the other project.
Okay.
And in that particular project, the construction management contract allowed them to pick a general contractor and do other things. It's a totally different role. And for this particular project, we thought it more appropriate to, to go the owner's rep route. And I could just tell you through the advertising process, being able to get fourteen bidders in, and then go through this interview process and then negotiate an amount that's below what we had programmed into the budget. I, I, you know, I, I feel like it's, it's paying off.
It's feeling good.
We're off to a good start.
Yeah, that's great. And I just want to be clear that this contract with H Design Group is from like now until post-construction.
That's correct.
The whole, like, the project. And, you know, I know we mentioned like experience in sustainable design as an aspect of the RFQ and evaluation. And so I, that makes me think about like what the process is gonna look like for the design and how the specific details are gonna be worked out in terms of like, you know, trying to get solar panels or what other features might be? Can you talk about like, who will be representing, like who from the city? And or like the sustainability commission or anyone else, Parks and Rec would be involved in the process?
I think that will be later in the process, but we will have those, those particular conversations. I know Sustainability has already asked about what might be going into this building. And some of the things that we talked about when we did the needs analysis were the fact that we wanted this to at least be ready for solar panels, whether or not we, we put those on, so looking at the, the roof structure to make sure it could potentially handle that. Another thing we talked about was how we build the electrical infrastructure, knowing that at some point there'll be some electrification of our, of our fleet. So those are all things that we're thinking about going into this project. We do have sustainability standards that we're gonna need to meet targets, so we'll have those conversations as this moves along. The first phase of this, though, is gonna be going back and confirming that everything we had in that needs assessment is, is, is still valid and things that we want to put into this, this hard design. So we're gonna start there, and I think there's probably opportunity towards the end of that confirmation process just to check in and say, hey, this is, this is where we're at with these particular items and, and keep those particular groups updated.
Great, thank you.
Okay, there you go.
No questions, thank you. Can you share with us what the range on the dollar bids were and where this, the winning bid or proposal fits within that range?
So on a design contract like this, you actually do a request for qualifications rather than a request for proposals. The difference is they don't submit actual costs. Everything has to be based on the qualifications of the firm as, as far as the selection's concerned, and that's set out in Missouri state law. Anytime you procure an architect or an engineer for a project, you have to base your decision on qualifications. So that's the difference between a request for qualifications, which this was, and a request for proposals. Once you've selected the firm that has the best qualifications for your particular project, then you negotiate a price for their particular services. So we had a number built into our budget. We wanted to make sure that we hit that number or came in underneath it, use that as kind of the basis of our negotiations, and again, we're, we're successful in coming in within that range with the, what we felt was the best firm that responded to our request.
Great, thank you. One is just a language question, and one is a more subsequent. It's, it's written here as Clayton Municipal Garage Renovation Project, but I, it's a tear-down rebuild, correct? It's not really a renovation?
It is not, it is a renovation, and then there's a secondary structure that would be placed on the site. So there will be some components of this that may have to be demoed, but we're gonna work through a phasing plan where parts of the building are still operational as this goes on. So we're not leveling the whole building, we're gonna utilize a, a large portion of it, but we do have to build a secondary building for some of our, our fleet functions.
Okay, cool.
Fleet storage at least.
And then with Becky's question related to going through the end of construction, if for some reason the project gets delayed, or let's say the financial markets take a right turn and we decide to delay this a year or two, what does that do as it relates to the contract? Is there a extra cost we take on? Is there a termination fee, like how to?
There's a termination clause within the contract. We would be responsible for paying for any work that was performed up until that termination date.
Okay. That was all I had.
One question that I have is, as we go through this design process, what will be, will there be opportunities for board updates?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so we'll go through the needs assessment. I don't know that we'll come back after the confirmation of the needs assessment, but once we get further along in that design, there will be some decision points for the board. I'm sure there are gonna be particular items or features that are gonna pop up, that are gonna have varying expenses, and we'll be checking in for, for feedback at times.
Okay, great. And then I, I just wanted to say one thing about the commons estimate. So you guys talked, each talked about the, the multi-use, multi-year-round, multi-use center. And then you're talking about two different versions of it, I think, because Becky's talking about the historical version, which was that design-build contract that our, our former director of parks, you know, arranged. And then you talked about the more recent design that, you, you talked about the commons that came in way over budget. We didn't really have a budget for it, so I just want to clarify that the recent design, the most recent one of the year-round center was based on a starting number of fifteen million, which was the historical number of fourteen, fifteen. And then to go out and get a new design, whatever, five years later, and post-COVID costs going up, it was, that became a new budget. So there wasn't really something that we didn't meet or didn't, we didn't have anything to compare to because the numbers were so old, and because there had been such a change in materials and labor after COVID. So I just wanted to clarify that, we did not have a budget.
When I was more talking about, we had a design firm that we engaged that's in Brentwood, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, so we, we had a designer for the, we had two things. We had a, in construction management for the, the overall project.
The older one?
Yes, yes, we're talking about the original.
Talking about the architectural fees that we're still paying off.
So we had.
Materialized, like created a building that we couldn't afford to build. That's what I don't want to happen.
Yeah, so we.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the old.
We've had lots of versions of that facility, so I was mistaking no claims on anything. I just wanted to understand how this arranged.
No, I just want to make sure that the design firm creates a building that we.
We have a budget for this.
I know, and I don't want to go, I don't want it to become. I don't want it to become something that thirty forty percent over budget.
I'm a little defensive. I admit it. Okay, so if there are no further questions or discussion. Alderwoman McAndrew.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero three six approving a contract with H Design Group LLC for the Clayton Municipal Garage. Garage project to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Question. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero three six, first reading, an ordinance approving a contract with H Design Group LLC. For professional design services related to the Clayton Municipal Garage renovation project.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
I.
Close?
I'll move that the board gives unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero three six on the day of its introduction.
Second. Sorry, sorry, Susan. All those in favor?
Hi.
Me opposed. Let the minutes reflect the board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero three six approving a contract with H Design Group LLC for the Clayton Municipal Garage Project to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Okay, any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero three six, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a contract with H Design Group LLC. For professional design services related to the Clayton Municipal Garage renovation project.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our main business. And we can do a round table if if we're if we're game. So I could start with Alderwoman McAndrew and what you've been up to.
I look and see in my notes.
That's okay.
Because I feel like we haven't been around here for a little bit.
Oh, you've been out of town, so it's understandable.
We, I have had there've been a couple of plan commission meetings. Most recently, I'm trying to remember. I mean, obviously, there was a. They've been some pretty long plan commission meetings, at least the most recent one. Just as a update, in case anybody knows, obviously, there was a. Home that's being or proposed to be demolished and then unbeamished in and to. It was the lot was subdivided into buildings were to be built. The architectural or ARB Plan Commission this past Monday voted to. Approve the site plan, but ultimately. Continued the architectural aspect of it. I think there were some concerns from a big part of the commission. It wasn't unanimous that it was still a fairly modern building. So that was, you know, perhaps the design team will come back to us. So but that's the big update from the. Plan Commission. So. We also had a finance, a CRSW finance meeting. The bottom line is, I think the deficit for the center looks. Not fantastic in the next budget year, not necessarily because the center is not doing well. There's some big capital projects that have to be done, something related to the roof. It's called a flat roof coating. That's $253,000. And a few different projects. That add to that. I think I think we're also trying to implement the marketing plan, which, you know, will cost us in the short run, but perhaps will be really great for the center long term. So we have a, that was just the CRSWC finance meeting. So the full CRSWC meeting is on Friday. So we'll have more discussions about that. And then ultimately, as everybody knows, the budget will come to us. Not sure if the date's been set to the Joint Board of Education and Joint B of A meeting. So. But that's all I have.
Anything from your end?
There is a Parks and Rec meeting and we welcome Jim Craig as the new chair. He did a great job. The issues there. We talked a little bit about. Dark skies in two of our parks and then we got a report in the pools with the lifeguards. They're getting, they're beginning to disappear back to school and whatever. They do in the fall. So I think that. The director's report said they were half-staffed at this point. Then the Oak Knoll waterproofing is continuing, apparently to the thrill of the preschoolers there who love to watch all the trucks and the digging. And talked some about Remembrance Park. It's finally moving forward. I think the board heard this last time as well. That the living wall is up and we did miss out on a couple of park municipal park grants because these are still outstanding. But hopefully it will continue to move forward quickly. And I don't know what the, I don't remember when the projected. Final date is for that. But I think it's coming up soon. So that's what that's all I've got. And I missed. I missed the uniform, the earth meeting, so I'll leave that to Gary to report on.
Good, thank you, Becky.
Yeah, thanks. I. Missed a couple of meetings because I was in Alaska. So I did watch the recordings and caught up on all the things that you all. Discussed and shared. So I appreciate that we do that. And. There was a sale or start for kickoff party, which was a nice event, always exciting to get ready for the art fair. Rick and I were able to get some updates on the process for the overlay proposals. So looking forward to that moving forward. I know I am. Really pleased with all the work that the staff put into incorporating resident concerns into those draft documents. And I am cautiously optimistic that residents will see that responsiveness and appreciate it. So that we can move forward on that project. And I'm going to take a stab at talking about some of what we did at the non-uniformed employee retirement fund meeting. Knowing that Rick will add or correct any misstatements I make, but I'm going to take a layperson's attempt at talking about what what happened. So. We had an experience study, which is like a really detailed review of our. Our pension, looking at like our assumptions and expectations and what actually happened. And that leads to some recommendations that can like change some of the factors that go into how we. Manage the fund or assumptions we make around it. So we reviewed those recommendations. And adopted the recommendations that were made in the study. And then we also had. Some discussion around changing the interest rate assumption. You know, a couple of years ago, we changed the interest rate assumption on the uniformed pension from seven to 6.75. And it's still been at seven on the non-uniformed pension. And we decided to keep it there for now, too. So. I'll find out in a minute how I did.
Yeah, okay, Alderman Fader.
On Monday morning, I attended the Pension Board meeting for the uniformed staff and the mayor was tuned in. And they gave their reports as our investment advisors as of June 30th, which were extremely positive. And even though we've gotten into August and there's been a big swing, the response is still that we are doing very well. Stay the course. And so it was all good. There was a brief discussion to the extent that some of our investments are real estate oriented. There was some discussion. About the continued uncertainty in the real estate development market, particularly related to interest rates. And to the capacity for various projects, apartments, housing, other kinds of projects, but. Mostly it was sort of uncertainty. There is expected to be a some action by the Fed in September and. But that is not likely to have a big impact necessarily on the real estate industry. But anyway, that seemed to be going well. As was mentioned, we had the art fair event. A number of us were present at the kickoff and I think that went very well. I think that's it, except there was one item that I mentioned to David today, and he thought maybe this would be an appropriate time to mention it. There was an accident that I know the chief is aware of on on Maryland a few weeks ago involving a cyclist. And someone who got out of a car and then basically walked to get onto the sidewalk, but didn't look to the right or the left. And ran right into someone who was on a cycle. Who fell off the bike, had fairly significant injury, I think. Mostly what I wanted to mention is that in in seeing some email about that, David mentioned that. One possibility to consider again was something that was considered when. The lanes were originally put in, and that was the idea of painting the the lanes green, that that strip right there so that they could be.
Yes, yes.
Pardon?
A big fan of that.
Yeah, so as as my understanding, I was on the board at the time that that while that was considered and it was done in some other places. The concern was if for some reason this turns out not to be a long-range project, once we implement it. The green will be extremely hard to get off so that it was kind of viewed as something kind of, let's, let's see how it goes. Well, it seems to me now that the the lanes are not going anywhere and that safety is paramount. And to the extent. That painting those lanes green might be a positive. At least I thought it was something that the board ought to kick around, maybe with staff. And see now that we're a few years into it, whether that's really something we ought to do. I I will say anecdotally. Robin and I went to Five Star and I was talking to him in the car about this happening, this accident. And damned if I didn't get out of the car. And I for sure did not look both ways because I never looked both ways because I'm just getting from the car. You know, getting onto the curb. And it made me think how if if people actually saw this lane was green, it would emphasize that that's why it's there. It would, I can't say it would have prevented this particular accident, but. I don't see a downside at this point. Other than, you know, if for some reason we get rid of them, which we're not likely to. But other than that, if it if it helps safe safety situations, I would certainly think we ought to consider it at this point, even if we didn't when they were first implemented. So. Just wanted to put that out there for whenever, whenever the discussion is appropriate, just thought it was worth talking about.
Right. And so thanks for bringing that up. I think I've been kind of waiting for the livable communities plan to be complete, to get a real definitive. You know, yay, nay, whatever else on that bike lane. And so when we finally, when we get that. That's when we get that, that will be really helpful. To give us, you know, a firm foundation for whatever our decisions are, paint it green or whatever else. Yeah. Rick, go on.
Great, thank you. I also attended the art fair kickoff and I want to recognize Gary for doing a wonderful job stepping in for you, Mayor, with his welcoming comments. So. He did a nice job with that. And I share Becky's observations regarding the Ward One overlay. Meeting and where we're going forward and certainly look forward to if we've received any feedback from Washington University yet. On our proposal. I do want to talk about the CRSWC that Bridget brought up a little bit. Just to note that. We we did approve, and again, this is at the Finance Committee. We've got to still approve it at the board level, but we approved a fee increase for the 2025 fiscal year. But one of the things that I want to make sure that we're aware of, that when we. Passed the step function for payroll some time ago for city employees, it also had the effect of. On all CRSWC employees. And so while we're projecting a significant increase in revenue due to the marketing plan. And the fee increase, that's about 400,000 of increased revenue. The cost of operations in part, which is personnel, is going up $700,000. And so that's obviously a negative effect. The other effect that's beyond personnel are utility costs. It's very expensive. We're seeing significant increases there. So this I'm sure will be a point of discussion. The other thing I want to point out is the impact is that there will be a negative fund balance projected on this. And you might recall when we had our. Audit review discussion with our auditor, she pointed out the fact that the city was carrying that, even though it's a joint liability of the two. So I guess I would ask our finance people to. Take a look at the budget when it's passed and then decide whether we might want to change our practice regarding. Allowing that fund balance to be fully funded by the city. And then Becky, I think you did a fine job going through the NERF. What I want to point out, in addition to what Becky said, is. Just to understand the magnitude of the decisions that were made. So as an aside. If we had chosen to. Go with the 6.75% assumed interest rate rather than seven, it would have increased our unaccrued actuarial liability by about $700,000. So the point is it's a meaningful number. And there were a variety of other assumptions that were in here, and there were two that were really meaningful. Again, the salary increases that we've proposed means that the ending salaries continue to go up. And so that means our cost of our pension plan is going up. So that's a negative in terms of our cost effect. What I found interesting, though, is that the assumptions regarding employee terminations. Has a more positive effect. We were assuming that we'd have. Fewer employee terminations and the impact of that is is whether or not we still have a liability or not. And if they terminate before the liability is due, that's a benefit to us. So the long and the short of it is, is we could have approved things that would have. Cost us somewhere between 545,000 a year and $650,000 a year. So $100,000 difference per year was really the magnitude of the decision. And I found it interesting that. While we have employee participants on this, they actually chose the less conservative of the two approaches, meaning the. As it turned out, the less expensive for the city. And so it's, we can always revisit this if we aren't performing there. But I I think it was a well-founded conclusion, given the outlook that all the experts provided that said we should be able to achieve it going forward. So I thought it's a reasonable conclusion. So those are my comments.
Before I started mine, Becky and Rick, you may have touched on the very end. What was the, what was the thinking besides it would cost us more to not increase, decrease in the discount rate? Because I I've seen. As some of you all have seen, like, that's how some governments can get in trouble by having these expectation of returns they can't meet. So I saw a lot of governments, I mean, they were at eight percent before doing big crashes like a decade ago. And I saw governments go down. So I'm just curious like what? Why the decision was made to not drop it from seven down to six.
So I've served on this commission for probably close to 25 years. And so when we've been doing this. Seven percent is always what we've had when everyone else had seven and a half, eight, eight and a half or nine. So the point is, is we've had it for a long time. We've looked at our tenure history and we've achieved seven percent in the tenure history. And we receive the outlook from. Our S A Consulting Group as well as the model that Gallagher, the actuaries put together. Which indicated that we should be able to achieve those in the 50 percentile. Predictability over the next 10 and 20 years. So the thought was we're 97% funded at this time, so we don't have a huge actuarial liability. History says that we have make it. Future says we're going to make it. We're still at the median relative to all plans in the country of our size. We're just not as conservative as we used to be relative to the others.
Okay. Thank you. The only thing is I had Susan touch on part of it to fill a little bit more. To on the Park and Rec Commission, two of our parks are Oak Knoll and Shaw, if I remember correctly. Are are applying for the. Dark Sky certification. Which I will not even try to fully explain what all that does. Other than it's a complicated process. We've got a, I think, an intern that's also helping with it. But. Everything's going to be going well with that. And it it aligns with kind of what we've talked about for dark sky on the overlays and some of the things. I would be remiss, given that my wife does a bunch of PTO work, to not talk about on Thursday, there is to return the school that I think we were invited to. Along with all the B O E stuff, it's over at Shaw Park. So I will tell her I made the plug. If any of you see here on Thursday, also tell her I made the plug. I think those are the couple of main things I want to talk about, otherwise Susan kind of covered the the Parks and Rec stuff, otherwise.
Very good. So I wasn't planning to bring this up, but since you you went over it quite eloquently. One of the things I did not bring up in the uniform pension board meeting, but I thought about is, so. A year ago or whatever, we went from seven percent to six and a half or whatever it is. a year ago or whatever, we went from seven percent to six and a half or whatever it is, 6.75. I kind of pushed the other way on that because it was going to cost the city, when we were having budget issues, an extra 80, 100,000 a year to do that. We eventually did it. But why, why do we, why don't we just go back to seven percent then if we are so sure that that's going to be achievable? And now we're down at six and whatever on the uniform.
So can I weigh in on that? So this is a little bit of art and science. And so the, generally speaking, there's, so a couple of factors. You have your actuaries do all this to make sure there's credibility. And then you'd have the experience studies to make sure that when you look back on your actual experience, that the assumptions are valid. And what you want to make sure of at the end of the day is that you are, in terms of your long-term plan, that you aren't digging yourself into either a deeper hole or that you're not overfunding it along the way. So it's always best to try to make sure that it's as accurate as possible. And there's no real reason to change it frequently, but you should. It's totally realistic to reconsider it periodically. So there isn't a right answer to this. It's a choice. Obviously, the dilemma of making it too low is that you then run the risk of overfunding it or costing the payer more. But you can correct that.
No, I mean, that's, and it's, while they're both city pension boards, the two pensions aren't identical. So I mean, the assets in both are different. The performance has been both, or has been different in both. The contributions are different in both, as far as what, you know, employees are putting in, everything about them is different. And so when that analysis was done for that particular plan, you know, they had a pretty strong recommendation that, you know, that we drop it, that they didn't have the confidence on the uniform side that they seem to have on the non-uniform side, that we'd be able to sustain that. So that's, that's why that recommendation was made. And in the short term, you know, we've still been able to hang in there. So the numbers look really, really good, but they still think that that particular mix, that we are going to start to see that that fall off over time and be prepared for that.
Okay, all right. I don't have a lot, but I do want to say ditto on the Washington University overlay. Great job. You guys have so much patience, A, and also just have done such a great job and feeling really good about it and hoping for moving forward. The, I am excited about the news. We've already heard about getting a five iron golf facility here in Clayton, which is an entertainment venue that we, that really is unique for the region. And also now, we are going to get something called the Flight Club. If you haven't read about it, it's what I would call really fancy upscale darts. And it's going to be kind of like, you know, like, like five iron golf, but darts. It's not going to be, you know, I don't have anything against bikers, but it's not going to be biker darts. You know, it's going to be, they'll have food and it'll be high-tech darts where you can, it tracks your, the flight.
Yeah. If you've been to Putt Shack.
I have.
It feels like, like it, just based on the description, like Flight Club is to darts what Putt Shack is to mini golf. Like sort of the same, but really different. Has anyone experienced it?
I, I participated in Flight Club up in Chicago. So I would, you're, you will not be disappointed. It was a lot of fun. And so it's, it was a wide variety of people were there, which was terrific, age-wise, all, all things. And everybody was having a good time. So not inexpensive compared to Blueberry Hill or something like that. But, but it was a lot of fun.
Great. So I'm just excited that we're finally getting a little traction in the entertainment lane. So we just hope that that continues. We could start getting some more, more things coming in.
Do we know, not that we would have to, but do we know is the parking garage going to be open to folks that use this? I'm just thinking about the volume of people we would like to see there and the fact that we've got a Centene parking garage that some people use, people can't. Centene's kind of.
You can always.
Public garage.
You can always go into Centene, yeah.
They'll be able to accommodate the use.
Okay, I'm sure, but.
Without charge or, I mean, do they charge it after a certain?
I mean, that depends on the business. Like some of the businesses there have an agreement to validate and some might not.
Just open to the public, you'll.
Yeah, they just to charge for the garage at all times. Gotcha.
But so I'm hoping to meet with their real estate group here coming up over the next month about a number of things. But I'm going to ask some of these questions too. Yeah. Okay, very good. Great meeting. Thank you, guys. See you next time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. How about that?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think anyone's opposed.
I didn't, I wasn't going to wait, Susan.
So bye, Susan.
We're all ready to go.
That's okay. I just left all the comments about the art fair opening because it's the only place I can think I might have been exposed to.
Did you have COVID?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it on the way back from Ireland, you know.
Yeah. All right.
Going around right now. It really is. I'm sorry.
Stay healthy, everybody.
See you soon.
Okay, bye.